...agenda items one through nine, which is the minutes of the regular city council meeting on June nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Approved city administrators attendance at the ICMA annual conference, approved payment shield technology, approved payment Iowa League of Cities, approved payment hometown plumbing and heating, approved payment parking for the future, approved payment foreigner Bakken, approved payment ACO, and approved claims list as presented in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. That breaks down to the general fund, eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, road use tax, five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, tax increment financing, two hundred and four dollars, ALMI set aside, hundred and thirty dollars, TIF debt service, five thousand, capital equipment pool, thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents, public works building, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents, water, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, sewer, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents, risk management, self-insurance, four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, flex account, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents, trust and agency water, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, Fourth of July celebration, nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, and the Pink Hills tour, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents. Any discussion?
May I just want to ask about that partnering for the future invoice?
That payment is actually to Greater Burlington Partnership. It's for that, invest that partnering.
That, that's a four-year?
It was a five-year, I believe. That's our last payment of the amount that we've already committed to.
Five thousand each year for five years, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Stuart?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Ms. Carey, your reports, finance. Rod, you got anything going?
Don't necessarily have anything new for finance. Obviously, we're gonna talk about a couple of finance issues. Not really prepared this early date to give a final report on Fourth of July, other than to say, I think we had a fairly successful party again, celebration in downtown West Burlington. I would like to thank, of course, the mayor and city administrator and the rest of the council for supporting and participating and helping out with that event.
Anybody have anything for finance? Streets?
I don't really have anything. Randy's not here, but I know that Dan can relate to Randy and telling that even though the Fourth and everything else, Neil, Rod, and I appreciate everything's going on, especially the city guys to set everything up and get things ready and that, and I do appreciate it. And the other thing, I want to thank everybody for donating to the Fourth and everything, and we really appreciate it, and I think it was one of the bigger ones that went off the show.
Very large crowds, from what I can see.
Big crowd, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for streets? I think Randy said they're going out and doing some alley patching.
Yeah, I saw Brad, he was still out at three with that big sweeper going through the alleys.
Yeah, he's sweeping the alleys so they can start doing some patching, get some of them holes patched. Finally, most of her dried out by now, till we get another downpour.
Yeah.
Public safety. Trees?
Um, I don't have anything. You get, if you can look down here, all right.
About Lieutenant Hanson and Chief Newberry tonight. Guy I think major going on.
Uh, just that we did get our new officer hired. He started on July first, David Boeb, so he's trained with Ringo for the next month or two before he goes to the academy, so.
Is he enrolled yet? Have you got that?
Yep, he starts the academy, I believe it's August twenty-eighth.
Okay.
It's a fifteen-week, I think, now, so he should be back and on the road, probably by January or February, February by himself, I'd think, by then, but, so it takes a little while.
Mm-hmm.
We sent him down to court today. There was a trial going on, we had him go down and sit through court, and he'll probably be there tomorrow to see how it finishes, just to see how that process works, so.
Could've went with me a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Mike?
Uh, buildings, Dairy Brothers is completed. Community college restroom upgrade should be completed either late this week or first part of next. Ortho rehab, interior work continues, painting cabinets, doors installation, ceiling's being installed, electrical, and the outside concrete work has begun. Marshals at the mall, the demo's completed, they're pouring the new floors and piers and footings for the outside facade and some, uh, work on the inside for roof support. Dayton Freight demo's completed, interior work's underway, alley distribution, their new office expansion is well underway, sheet rock wiring and plumbing is being installed, and rental inspections continue, and we are still continuing to schedule them throughout the year, try to finish them up hopefully by around the first part of November like we did, uh, in last year. On the fireside, we did a public service, we delivered some smoke detectors to three-twenty-one Ramsey at the request of the owner. The association announced that October twelfth is going to be the chicken and fish fry in coordination with Fire Prevention Week. We're working on developing a dive team at the request of the hospital because of the client center and the clientele there. The hospitals involved, the fire department, the police department, and Burlington Fire Department is also involved in this development. We have three divers on the PD side, two police officers and one wife that are certified, and we'll take it and work with them from there, and we're hoping to do a dive in September so we can get them started. And finally, we had a good turnout for the breakfast on the Fourth of July and the Pink Hills event, and the fire department wants to thank the community for all their support. That's all we got.
Have you got a target date for marshals yet?
Uh, they're supposed to be completed, uh, in October.
So they'll be open for the?
They're gonna be, they want to be open for the holidays.
Wow.
So.
Chief, I read in the paper a number of two thousand pancake breakfasts served. Is that a, is that an accurate number, or do you have any idea?
Uh, it was, it wasn't quite two thousand. Last I heard was over fourteen hundred.
Okay.
But I don't know the exact number.
Two thousand seem, I mean, that's a great number, but it was a lot more than?
Yeah.
Lot more than we had imported in the last couple of years, so.
When I looked at the counter, and it was probably another forty-five minutes to it, and it was over fourteen hundred people through the door.
Cool, okay, thanks.
So.
Anyway, you look at it, it was a whole lot of folks.
Yeah, a whole lot of folks, a couple, three times down the street.
Yeah.
Just went a little late, later, too, didn't it? I mean, there was still a line there when it was?
At eleven?
Oh, yeah, we served.
Ten-thirty or eleven.
Yeah, we served till probably a little after eleven before we got everybody served, so, went well.
Did the association do anything for the nineteen firefighters out west?
No, other than a moment of silence at our training meeting and things like that, yes, we did, but, uh, other than that, no, I don't think they sent ours or anything. I know when we, the shooting that we had up in, uh, where was that, Rhode Island?
Yeah.
Uh, we did send a card to the fire department, uh, because they went through a lot dealing with all those kids and all that, so. I'm sure we'll, the association will do something eventually, once something comes out that, uh, you know, the family, something, yeah. A lot of that, there's still a lot of things that haven't come out yet that I'm sure they will address, uh, at some time.
Alrighty, anything for the chief or the lieutenant? Utilities, Karen, you got anything?
I don't have anything for utilities. Randy isn't here. Um, I do wanna thank everybody for coming out and supporting the Pink Hills event. Our race was a tremendous success for our first year. I was very, very happy with the turnout, and want to thank everybody that was involved with that. Dan, do you have anything for utilities?
I do not have anything.
Anybody have anything?
I'd like to just quickly comment, Kara, I did, I did attend your, your walk-run, uh, was there for the start of it and the end of it, uh, didn't stay for the celebration of pictures and the craziness of dumping everybody in pink.
Missed that.
I got out of there for that. I thought that was a very well-attended event.
It was.
It went off very smooth, lot of, lot of people in that event that I knew that was walking and running and stuff like that. Shortly after that, unfortunately, my mother was taken to the emergency room, and I missed the rest of your day, so I apologize for that, but I, I thought the walk-run went, went off very smoothly and, and was a good event.
Lot of cornstarch got shot out.
Yes, it did.
Alrighty, sanitation.
I don't have anything.
Everybody have anything for sanitation? Kelly, you got anything?
We are doing the citywide garage sale the last Saturday in July, and, um, people can register at City Hall, and we'll, we're gonna make up a city map showing all of the registered sales. So the sale's Saturday, July twenty-seventh, from eight to four, and they set a rain date the following Saturday, which was August third. Registration deadline is this Friday to be on the map, so if you know anybody interested.
The twenty-sixth?
Twenty-seventh.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Lastly, you got anything? Alrighty. Anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? Everybody running? New business, item number one is the presentation of Partnering for the Future campaign from, no, Campaign Two from the Greater Burlington Partnership. We got Jason Hutchison and Paul Santiago, we'll go in, Matt's in here tonight. Wanna hop up? Who wants to do the start? Tag team?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Paul. Well, good evening. Uh, my name is Matt Shin, and I'm the, the co-chair for the Partnering for the Future Campaign Two. Um, approximately five years ago, uh, some community leaders got together and decided that we needed to really move our economic development initiatives forward. And five years ago, the community as a whole put together a plan to raise one point five million dollars to go towards the economic development of our, of our community. Prior to that, the largest amount of money that had ever been raised for economic development was six hundred thousand dollars, so at the time, you can see the, uh, the risk and, um, the, uh, the large amount of, I guess, faith in our community and its leadership to, uh, to rise to the challenge. Uh, that campaign was, was successful in raising the one and a half million dollars over the five-year period, and, and the result of that was twenty-four new projects to our community. There have been over eight hundred new primary jobs created. Those dollars helped us to retain five hundred and forty-three jobs that were in jeopardy of being lost, and we've had over a hundred million dollars in capital investment since that time. Our tourism expenditures have increased exponentially to over four hundred million dollars in that period, and new developments have started throughout our communities. Well, five years has, has passed, and we've had a lot of, a lot of successes to celebrate, but as, as that first campaign winds down here in two thousand and thirteen, we're now setting our sights looking forward for the next five years. And, um, we've set a new goal of one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next five-year period. The goals that were set five years ago were very aggressive, and the goals that are set for the next five years are very aggressive. But what we've got now, as we look forward for the, the next five years, is we have an absolutely outstanding track record. I think the, the partnership and, and the community leadership has shown and demonstrated the ability to take the funds entrusted by the investors and to use them wisely to benefit all of the citizens here in our community. So with that, I'd like to ask, uh, Jason Hutchison, president and CEO of the partnership, to talk about the goals, uh, for the next five-year period.
Thanks, Matt. Obviously, we have a brochure, and you're capable of reading that, but I want to walk through some of the, the highlights of that with you. And, uh, as Matt said, um, under Dennis Hinkle's leadership, there were some pretty aggressive goals set, and, and really, it was time, it's time to redouble our efforts in, in economic development, and there was a lot of risk involved, and, and I think as a community, we've been successful. It wasn't one project, it wasn't half a dozen projects, there were twenty-four projects, uh, quite a few in, in your community that contributed to that success. And so it's important, and it was important, as we put the next five-year plan together, we couldn't just take the same goals that we had, even though we were successful, change the numbers and put it out there, because the community has changed, the dynamics here have changed, the economy has changed, and, and so we, we need new goals. But what, we're here really because economic development across the country is typically funded this way, um, through, uh, investment campaigns. In many communities, um, the, the public sector supports, uh, economic development uh, i- in, in very large amounts. In most areas, uh, the public sector support for economic development is greater than the private sector support. Uh, that is not the case here. We have incredible private sector support for economic development. And you can see that, uh, we've got a, a leadership team assembled for this campaign, uh, Steve Delaney with the Hawkeye, uh, Matt Shin, both our co-chairs, then we have an, an outstanding team of, of leaders, uh, to propel this forward. And, uh, Paul Santiago with Convergent Nonprofit Solutions is, is helping us through this effort. His, uh, group conducted about sixty interviews, uh, when the draft plan was put together, and we've, uh, refined it based upon that feedback. You can see, uh, some of the other communities in Iowa and what their five-year investment campaigns are generating in terms of, of investment. And those communities are gonna raise more money than us, uh, but we have a good group of, of, uh, volunteers in our organization and team members that are trained to leverage every dollar effectively, and, and so although those other communities may outspend us, we've got a darn good program here, and we want to see that move forward. Let's go ahead and, and, and jump to, uh, to the goals, um, kind of in the middle of your packet. Economic development is really the, the main focus, and, uh, with the, the fertilizer plant, there are a lot of opportunities, uh, on the supplier base, the supply chain of that, and as we talked with our, our major employers, they've got a real interest in having suppliers locate closely to them. Just-in-time delivery is important, uh, quality and reliability are important, and the closer a supplier is to those plants, uh, the, the better the odds that they're gonna have a successful relationship together. Uh, and so we're working with those existing companies to develop a supplier database, and, and we want to reach out to those folks. We also, uh, the, the state of Iowa's been fairly aggressive in reaching out to Eastern Asia. Governor Branstad in particular has built some pretty good relationships over there. Uh, we've had a, a very successful, um, call program in, in Europe, specifically in Italy, and we want to diversify and reach out to Eastern Asia as well, and, and do that in partnership with the, the state of Iowa. Entrepreneurship is still very important to us, and we'd like to see quite a few business starts over the next few years. Industrial site development, Flint Ridge Business Park has been, uh, a, a good success for our community. We started with more than three hundred acres, we're down to about a hundred twenty-five acres or so, uh, of developable land in Flint Ridge Business Park. Um, but we also need to look at a pure industrial park. There are some industries that are well-suited for our demographics and our workforce that we would not want to put in the middle of our, in, in the middle of our community. They might be loud, they might be noisy, they might be, uh, a little bit dirty or unsightly. We don't want that in the middle of our community. Some of those things would be better in a, a pure industrial park, and so we want to put some dollars towards that. The dollars we're raising here are not gonna build us, uh, our next generation industrial park, but it's gonna be a good start in helping analyze some of the infrastructure needs and, and potentially begin securing some options on, on some of that land. Workforce attraction and preparedness is one of the, is probably the top issue we hear from existing employers. There are employers that have open positions because they cannot find the right, um, talent to fill those positions. Uh, it's not every position, there are some targeted positions, but most, well, but there are several companies that have, uh, open positions, and nearly every employer talks from time to time about the difficulty, whether it be with, uh, drug testing, or with, uh, the correct skillset match, or longevity with an employer. Those are all issues that, that our employers are concerned about. And as it, as we talk to peers across the country in economic development, those communities that figure out this workforce piece are gonna be best prepared for the future. Uh, they're gonna be winning the projects of the future. Yes, community amenities are important, uh, yes, the right buildings and the right land are important, uh, yes, infrastructure's important, but people are, are really important to this equation. Uh, and we also have, uh, set a goal, we've got folks coming here with the fertilizer plant, they're coming here for a job, they're leaving their families wherever they're coming from, and they're coming here to work, uh, so they've got a pretty strong work ethic. We'd like to keep a few of those folks here, and so we want to do some marketing and outreach to those folks that are gonna be in our communities temporarily, and, uh, try to encourage them to, um, to stay here permanently, and we've set a goal of, of reaching out to ten percent of those and, and convincing ten percent of the, the temporary workforce to call this community home, uh, for the rest of their lives. Community enhancement is, uh, always on our radar, and we've set a, a new goal of population. I don't have to tell you, population in this general area has declined for quite some time. It's time to, to, uh, to turn that tide and set a goal of increased population, so we've set a goal of forty-two thousand countywide by two thousand and twenty. Uh, to do that, we're gonna have to have, uh, housing stock, and we're gonna have to have the right housing stock, and so we're gonna do some additional analysis on that and, and, uh, work with, uh, you as, as regulators and you as encouragers to make sure that we've got the right housing stock available and can do what, uh, what we need to do, um, to conquer that challenge. Also, leadership, um, is important in both business and in community, and by pure demographics, we're gonna have, uh, a shift in the workplace, uh, and there are gonna be leadership positions open, there are gonna be, uh, spots in elected office that are gonna be open, and we've got a, a fairly successful leadership program we started a couple of years ago. We'd like to see seventy-five folks go through that program, uh, over the next five years. I'm gonna skip downtown redevelopment, I'll come back to that. Visitor attraction, uh, we are the third fastest county in the state for tourism growth right now. Our, our, our industry, uh, is, is doing really well. Um, we still have a ways to go, we'd still, uh, we still have some capacity at our hotels we'd like to see filled, but, uh, tourism's been a pretty, uh, pretty important industry to our community. Downtown redevelopment, specifically downtown Burlington redevelopment, I know this isn't at the top of your taxpayers' priority list, but I think we would all agree that, uh, for our community at large, uh, seeing redevelopment in, uh, some of the buildings in downtown Burlington is a good thing for the entire community. Uh, there's been some momentum there, uh, in, in recent years, and we want to see that continue. Um, that's really the plan, uh, you can read the, the things that I have skipped over, but that's the vision for the next five years. And I think the reason that, that a five-year plan is important is because it, it sets the mark out there and it allows us to align our work plan to that. Sure, we're gonna tweak it along the way as needs change, but that's the vision, and that's how we're gonna allocate the resources, and so we're, uh, we're out there visiting with the public and private sector to make this happen. Uh, we have about one point, uh, three million dollars committed, uh, to the effort at this point in time, uh, so we are well on our way to that one point seven-five, uh, goal. Our request of the city of West Burlington i- is a consideration of, uh, ten thousand a year over the next five years. Uh, it is an increase from where you're at today. It, it is the same number, uh, that we have asked Des Moines County for and intend to ask the city of Burlington for. Why is that? Uh, we believe that, that our government partners are, are equal partners, and so that's, that's the reason for the request. I've done a lot of talking, as I usually do, but I'm, uh, uh, very, very interested in your feedback and input.
Everybody hearing questions? Comments?
I think it's a good program, and I believe, well, majority of us up on, up here in the city council voted for it the last time around. My, my question is that ten thousand seems a hefty price per year, when we probably bring in the least amount of taxes generated to us with local, local option sales tax that, you know, I, I, I just don't think that I, I personally could guarantee ten thousand, I'm not, a year. We, we just, I don't know. I think Des Moines County and Burlington, I, they have a bit of, bit of more population than we have, and I just think ten from us is steep, but that's just my opinion.
Now, we did originally start funding that out of local option. We changed that about midway, and now we're funding that out of TIF.
I'm gonna ask you.
With a development agreement, so that does free up a little more money than what we had when we originally made the, the, the donation of half that last time. Um, we have a little bit better pool of money to, to, so we could fund a higher amount if that's what you desire. We have the money to do that.
Well, you put some nice literature together here. I'm just curious how Kara got in here.
She was in the right place at the right time, and she's cuter. I'm also on the banner downtown on the.
That could've a lot, that could've a lot cuter.
Come in from Illinois, you can see her again.
Oh, really? Your, uh, your dear council member's letter here, my gosh, you're taking credit for everything. Um, do you think, do you not think a lot of this would've happened with, with, without your, uh, having a Partnering for the Future initiative program? For, you cite, for example, the General Electric, and Jason, I know you had a lot to do with that. Um, but I think that was outside of the plan, Weingard Company. Did that have anything to do with the plan, the case expansion? You, you cite those items in your letter. Uh, just going along with what Councilwoman Leece is, is saying, uh, I think there's a lot more the Partnering for the Future does for communities outside of West Burlington than they do for West Burlington. That ten grand is, is a surprise to me that you'd be asking that much. Quite honest with you, until tonight's meeting, I wasn't even aware that we were giving you five grand a year. I guess I missed that the last couple of years when we paid that bill, but, uh, I, I just, I think a lot of this is gonna happen on its own. Uh, you're, you cited, you want twenty-five new businesses to start. Do you, do you know what those might be, or is that just a wish, or an estimate of how many might start, or?
I, I appreciate your question on, on several levels. Um, we, this is part of our, our work plan, and, uh, there have to be dollars for the organization to operate. If you're asking me if the five thousand a year that, that, uh, West Burlington committed to this effort last time around is directly responsible for General Electric staying in town, I'm not gonna make that link. This is the strategic plan for, for the, the future, and we believe that that dollar amount is what's needed to implement the plan. Now, we have a strict standard. When you talk about taking credit for projects, there are a lot of things that happen organically in the, in the community. Those things are not included in our totals. Um, when we talk about twenty-four projects and the number of jobs that we've seen created, those are only projects that we play a role in. Now, did we make the difference? I don't know. It, it, it would be arrogant for me to say that in every project, we were the ingredient that made it successful. Private companies create jobs, we don't do that, but, um, but only those things that we play a role at the table. The twenty-five business starts, for example, we're gonna have a lot more than twenty-five businesses start over the next five years. We want to see twenty-five businesses come out of our business plan competition. Um, would those businesses have started anyway? I don't know, maybe. We think that by going through our competition and getting their business plan critically reviewed, um, by ten sets of. The 25 business starts, for example, we're going to have a lot more than 25 businesses start over the next five years. We want to see 25 businesses come out of our business plan competition. Would those businesses have started anyway? I don't know. Maybe. We think that by going through our competition and getting their business plan critically reviewed by 10 sets of eyes over a three to four month period, we think that improves their odds of starting their business. So, I appreciate your question and I hope I've answered it adequately.
Yeah. It's just, careful weight. It's so dang easy to sit up here and spend somebody else's money. It is. It's the easiest thing I've ever done in my life.
I mean, it's just like a question of how do you determine if everybody gives $10,000 that how you share so that the businesses are equal into both different cities and their surrounding areas?
We don't.
No?
We can't.
Well, I know that.
You know, this, to me, this is a whole different animal, the way I look at it. You know, you've got to take the walls down eventually because it doesn't matter, you know, if it's good for Burlington, eventually it's good for us. If it's good for us, it's good for Burlington, it's good for the county. It's just a circle that works all the way around.
Right.
And the majority of our residents don't work just in West Burlington. You know, the ones that do have jobs. They work in Burlington or the county or Mount Pleasant or Fort Madison. So, you know, we're all in this together to try to maintain and get jobs. And, you know, we ought to be promoting it and as best as we can. And because the good paying jobs aren't there anymore. And that's what we're trying to get back is some of these good paying jobs. We can't, kids starting out today, they can't live on $8 an hour. Not when gas is $4 an hour. And when we see, you know, the big, my biggest fear has already started. We've got the slum lords raising the price of their rental properties with this fertilizer plan coming in. They've banded together and come up with a, you know, there's so much against unions, but down, right down to the nitty gritty, they formed a union.
Unofficial.
Unofficial.
I think another important point of this is like Jason mentioned, you know, the three governments are only putting $150,000 into this. 1.7 million. That's a big private, big amount of private dollars that are going into this. And I think us leveraging a little bit of money to that is probably a pretty good investment.
The investment is, I mean, job wise and everything else, you're going to see a $10, $13. I had, what Hans had and what I had isn't there anymore. I don't think it will ever will be. Not for quite a few years or even within the 10 years. But you'll still see the 13 maybe possibly up to 15. But even they don't hire lawyers anymore. They don't hire a few of the other people that's been going on for the higher paying jobs anymore. I just haven't seen, it's like General Electric, you know, and I even worked at General Electric. How General Electric's has brought stuff back into the United States, I haven't seen. And you see what they have done over there at that factory and it's a decrease more than an increase. Of course, I know how they work and that's the way they like to work.
Well, I do like the part about a task force with the school superintendents. Is anything like that being done now?
We've had, we've had a workforce committee for some time, but it, it needs to improve its aggressiveness and we need to get more folks at the table. And that's going to be critical.
Are the superintendents willing to participate in this?
I think they will be. We've, I think we had the pasta in politics with the city councils a couple of months ago. We did the same thing with the school districts, all of the, the public districts in Des Moines County. And it was a, it was a good session. There was a lot of dialogue between them that they haven't had and I think we need to do some more of that.
But just to go back to your comment, Dan, the $50,000 is probably peanuts to, as to the 1.7 million. But we also give tax incentives and rebates and things of that nature that we just can't wipe that away that just this 50,000 is all that we do because we do more than that.
We'll still have to do all that stuff. If we have stuff coming to our community, we'll still have to keep doing that. That's.
Well, I realize that, but you didn't mention that.
I think GE should donate some of their money back and invest.
So, eventually, Mr. Gifford, how would, how would we decide on this, what will eventually happen here? I mean, these, these fine folks are making a presentation this evening, but what would we end up doing, putting this on a future agenda? Put this on an agenda and discuss it and hash it out and. With suggestions from you and Leslie on for sure how to pay for it and scheduling that into what we've already planned for our greater West Burlington future. Jason knew that was coming sooner or later. Yeah. And let me defend.
We're definitely going to have to budget for it, so it's going to be.
That's what I'm saying. And I would agree with about seven eighths of what the mayor said. I'm not sure about that union amongst the renter guys, but anyway. But the rest of that, I basically agree with what he said. And to defend your organization, do you help? Do you not help? Definitely you do. Do some of these projects happen without you? Absolutely. Did you play a big role in helping us locate Honda here in town? Yes, you did. And you and I both know that and we were in on some of those joint telephone calls along with Mr. Gifford, Mr. Raleigh. And so, yeah, I have a little bit of a crawl in the downtown development as you already knew. You already knew that was coming from me. I have a problem with that being one of six bulletin points. You break this project down into six bulletin points and one of them is solely construction downtown Burlington. And yet, my contribution you ask to be the same as Burlington's. I like some other council people have a little bit of a problem with that. However, I do see the bigger picture and as Hans said, what's good for one ends up eventually being good for the other. It just, it's hard for me to see that as one of only six items. If it was one of 10 or 20, it would be easier for me to handle.
Ron, did you say our contribution would be the same as Burlington's?
Yeah, and I got, I have some heartache with, that's what Jason said. He's asking us for 10, Burlington for 10 and Des Moines County for 10.
I heard the county. I didn't hear Burlington for 10.
So, I guess I understand that, but yet I don't. You know, and you and I have had many conversations.
Sure.
And, you know, it's been said in the community that when the chamber walks in, Crowder says, surely, let's do it, get out the checkbook. But that's not true and you and I both know that's not true. At some level, I'm obviously for this, going to vote for it. If too many of my council people have a too big of a heartache with the 10 million, I might waver a little bit.
10,000.
10 million.
10,000. Yeah, let's cut that back just a little bit. Almost had just the next one. But you know that and you know where I'm coming from, Jason. We've had many talks. But you guys do this stuff. One of your quotes, one of your mottos is something about doing the things that people think just get done or something like that. And I've seen you folks at work. I've seen the things you've been able to do, how you've been able to get between the companies and the, and the cities and put deals together that probably wouldn't have got done otherwise, quite honestly. It's very hard for CEOs of companies to come knocking on our door and ask for stuff and us to deal with them. And it works out better dealing through you guys as the agent and so on and so forth that. You know, so I'm basically in support of this program. A few little tweaks would be nice, but, you know, I'm going to vote for some part of it.
I think at the end of the day, what we'd like to get is a five-year commitment. And, you know, you've got to pick the number that makes sense for you and the folks that you represent. Obviously, it's subject to annual appropriation. We know that. And, you know, if you're not happy with the performance, then you address it down the road. But, so, what we're asking our public partners for is a five-year commitment, knowing full well that it's got to go through the budgeting process and is subject to that annual appropriation.
It was also good that you brought along a west, a nice West Burlington young man with you.
No, long time.
Mr. Matt Shin.
I didn't know this is a little more formal setting than normal that I'm used to. I hope everyone has an opportunity to read the brochure because, you know, what brought my family to this community in 1970 was a job. It was a job. It was a job. And the Shin family wouldn't be in Southeast Iowa today if it wasn't for a job. And there's a lot of things that you do give to. But this one goes to building the entire community. You know, and jobs, I think, bring self-esteem and those kinds of things back into the home. Jobs ultimately at the end of the day, put shoes on kids' feet, they put coats on their backs and they also pay taxes to help promote schools. And I don't know of any other campaign or investment that you can make or that's out there that helps promote this the way that you do. So, I personally am very passionate about this. Two Rivers is very passionate about it. Without giving the number, I will tell you that this is the biggest investment. We make the largest investment our company makes is in the Partnering for the Future campaign. Because just like the city of West Burlington, Two Rivers, we are an integral part of this community. And unlike General Electric or some of these other companies or whoever, I don't mean to single them out. My dad worked there. I don't mean to single them out. We can't pick up and move. And Two Rivers is only as strong as the communities in which we serve. You know, and that's why we feel very strong and very, very, we're very passionate about the work that the partnership does. And we appreciate your leadership and your consideration of this.
See, and what I'm getting at is like group wise is, is that when you stand there and you come to the city council and that stuff and General Electric was an important business in our area the whole time, like your dad, myself and quite a few people. Case company the same way. But then we get turned around and you come and ask us $5,000 and we give it to you to try to help improve. And then we go up to 10,000. Well, we've got to pay GE $50,000 a year out of our budget. And it would be nice if you guys would go and say it to, actually to Jim Evatt, can you help us out with $5,000 out of the company? Or even $2,500 to help the community, you know? And they're supposed to be a community where, but could help the city too as far as what they're doing. We bailed them out, we helped them out and we pay a tremendous amount of money on our side in there. So, sometimes if you could go around to some of the companies and said, you know, can you help out with $1,000 or can you help out, you know, with that? With Teresa standing there saying $5,000, would GE maybe could give them $5,000 to help the city? Or even split it that way? And it's, and it's a big part for us not to downgrade GE or something of that sort, but bring them back out and maybe they can improve, you know, of what they're doing because they're helping out in the community and people won't have that hate feeling about GE sometimes.
I owe, I owe everything to the generous general. That's my dad used to call them.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And so forth. But, you know, and we are an equal opportunity aster. Because at the end of the day, they are as part of, biggest part of this community as the next person. And there isn't any stone that's really getting unturned in that regard.
Of course, I know Jeff can afford it.
And the other good thing about this thing is you've got you and Delaney working together. I think that's pretty neat. Mr. Negative, Mr. Positive. I like that.
It's amazing what the partnership can do.
Had to be said. Thanks.
The only thing I can add is that it's too bad that we've gotten to this point. Because 40 years ago, these companies were locally run and not by somebody that sits way over there in BF Egypt somewhere, you know, and puts a dollar figure to this and that where we had local interest in the companies and you didn't have to have worry about going to the city councils and begging for money. You didn't have to go, you know, to an organization, you know, like Greater Burlington Partnership to come up to keep these companies here because they made the investments and all this, but we're all playing the same game. And whoever to elect to meet the first ones that started it, because I'd like to take them out behind the woodshed somewhere.
May I share one more, one more thing?
Go ahead.
Several years ago, there was, there was a group that went to Dubuque to take a look at Dubuque once Dubuque landed the IBM. And, you know, and if anybody remembers what Dubuque looked like in the 80s, unemployment was double digit. It was in the teens and the, the saying in Dubuque was with the last one in Dubuque, please turn the light off. And I really think the 80s were kind of a special time for Dubuque. Because Dubuque had an opportunity to either get with the program or live up to the motto, would the last one please turn the lights off? And through that crisis, they got with the program and we can see what the results of that are today. I've been told throughout my life that there are really primarily two things that really create change. Crisis and leadership. I would prefer not to wait for crisis. I'd rather have the leadership.
But in the, in the Dubuque, it was the CEOs and everybody that got involved in it.
It was the what?
CEOs and everybody that got involved in that. It wasn't just cities that was getting involved. There was everybody that got involved in that.
And the CEOs are involved.
Yeah.
The local.
To the point of Mr. Gifford saying that cities have contributed $150,000 of the 1.7 million.
Exactly.
Less than 10%.
Yeah. Your asking of us is minute of the whole goal.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And that is why I sit here in with a totally clear conscience, knowing what our company is contributing.
Absolutely.
And I feel very good about asking the city of West Burlington to, to consider this ask. Because I personally, I wouldn't be sitting here, feel like it's, it is, it's a great investment for the city to make.
And I've never said it publicly, but I know that, and this company isn't even in West Burlington, but they got a West Burlington address, Standard Beverdale. They've contributed a lot. And which really.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
Doesn't ever come out or, but I, tonight I would like to recognize them and say thank you to them, you know, in public because I've seen the numbers that they've contributed.
Ken Schwinker and his company definitely have a heart for the community and definitely are about promoting the greater good. Absolutely.
Well, we will put this on the future. I don't think anybody's against it up here. I mean.
I think we'll make a five-year commitment. We just don't know what that dollar figure will be.
What that dollar figure's going to be. I don't think it's going to be less than what we've contributed. We'll have to figure out something during the budget.
Are we going to vote for that after or before the franchise tax vote?
Oh, God.
It won't make a difference how much money we have in our coffers depending on how that vote goes, right?
I want to thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Sorry for the hard time.
I'd feel left out if you didn't. All right, thanks.
Oh, item number two is to consider payments. Snyder Associates for engineering services, $38,420 and $87 for design services and $204 for construction on the lift station.
Motion to approve both payments.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Just one. We were going, what was the, we went over?
$1,200, exactly.
Yeah. Are they done? Is that 100% done now? Are they still working on stuff?
Those were for incidentals.
Incidentals.
In the contract. It was actually for the, the plants that they had sent out, which weren't included in the original contract.
Okay.
Go call.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider change to personnel manual, overtime hours. Right now, we've got overtime hours that list as at anything out over eight and we need to change that to 40.
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Only makes sense.
Makes good sense.
Makes good sense, but I'm not for it.
Oh, really?
Well, I used to get paid. Well, I used to get paid overtime after eight.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Sorry, man.
You put in a forty-hour work week, so...
And that only comes in factor when they do lifeguarding, I mean, they do swimming lessons and pool parties.
Yeah, they can work twenty hours a week and get...
Yeah.
Four or five hours overtime if they do swimming lessons in the morning and a pool party at night. They can, they can just work that one day and get a few hours overtime.
Oh, 'cause they're over eight and get overtime.
Probably not appropriate for that level of...
Not in this new age.
Okay. Roll call.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number four is to consider purchase of training prop for the fire department, in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
I went and talked to Mike about this today, 'cause I thought that was the dumbest thing I've ever heard of until he told me what it was, and...
Could you explain it to him, Mike?
It's a steel door.
Steel door.
It's all...
Thousand-pound steel door that we can use for forcible entry, firefighter one, firefighter two. What it's all about. They used it here in November when we had the Traditions Group in here. They did Halligan one oh one and one oh two classes, and they loved it.
And at the cost of bringing that in was eighteen hundred bucks?
Eighteen hundred bucks for a two-day class, and we can use it now whenever. And I know, I talked to Matt about it, and Burlington wants to use it and the whole bit, so it will, it won't go unused, believe me.
Well, if, don't take this wrong, is that if other fire, uh, departments use it, would it be better to share the cost of the thing, or is it just that you want it?
I want it for our guys, mostly.
Okay.
'Cause this is a...
But you're still gonna lend it out to anybody else?
Everybody wants to use it, but it'll be under our instruction of our people, not just anybody hitting on it.
So could we charge for that?
Yeah.
We could, to try to regain part of it, if we, if they put a class on or, or whatever.
Well, I, I feel that, you know, if you're gonna put a class on it, maybe a small charge. I, you know, it could be ten bucks. I don't care.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
You know, it's just the idea of a small charge, since we're gonna go ahead and pay for it. Or the other idea would be if you would all gather, knowing that you're gonna use it, and everybody pays a share of it.
Yeah, and that would have to go through each city council and all that. Who knows? I'd rather have it and have our people using it, and it's a hands-on prop, which, right now, this department doesn't have many hands-on props. When we get the concrete poured out there and get some more cars in out there, and we're gonna build some roof props and some other things out there, uh, we need the hands-on.
I just feel if you're gonna train it for other fire department, if you have...
We can always charge a service charge just for our user fee. You're not gonna just pick it up and move it, 'cause it's a thousand pounds.
Right. And which they could come here and even have a class.
But that's what I say. Our guys that went through the Halligan would be the instructors for the class. So we can...
Well, I'd like to see officers that come up with a small charge with something.
But it's, it's for popping the, the locks off, the deadbolts, all that kinda stuff?
Yeah, from a door that swings in, from a door that swings out, and everything else. We can go into a, a business or whatever. If we don't have a Knox box, we can take the door off, pop it, walk in, do our thing, come back out, put it back together.
Without doing great damage.
Never even know we were there.
Yep. Yep.
And that's what they learned that weekend, when that, when they came in back in November.
Did they have burglary tools? No, never.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff we probably wanted to know.
Dan, did you work with them on some type of charge with them?
It shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Did you have a motion made?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, for roll call.
Yes. Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Carry.
And our guys are gonna go pick that up.
Yep, at no charge, bring it back, set it up. Like I said, when we talked today, we have to put it on a pallet and, and do some beefing up of the pallet, 'cause it's gonna take a, a thousand pounds. You can't just pick it up by two or three. If we can get it on a pallet, then we can use the Public Works tractor to, to pick it up and move it, as we have classes. And when we don't have classes, we can put it back and store it.
So next week, we'll buy a new tractor.
Why don't you call Huffman's and see if they can build you a metal...
That's a great idea.
A metal pallet.
That's a great idea.
Wooden pallet, 'cause...
Okay.
He may not hold it.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause it's gonna take some support, 'cause we gotta anchor through it and the whole bit.
That's a great idea.
More hands-on, and that's what we need.
They could probably build you a metal pallet to hold that kinda weight.
Okay.
Okay. Item number five is consider HVAC for fire station utilizing funds from two thousand twelve, Safer Grant, in the amount of seventy, seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the air conditioning and heating unit, and a ten-year warranty, three hundred and seventy-five bucks.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support.
Where are these guys out of? I've never heard of Oliver.
They're, they're out of here, out of West Burlington.
Are they really?
They're, they got a...
Route.
Real route, yeah. I've seen their trucks running around, Oliver on the side.
See, I'm working all the time on top of the Broadway.
Oh, is that right?
All the time.
That's not good.
Whole system?
Yes.
Trying to keep the...
So they didn't fix it today, and they're back tomorrow again.
Another rainforest in there?
There's a hint there. I have one problem with this.
It's a, it's a new unit, though.
Yeah, I know, and that's the good part. And they're good people. And, and all three of these bidders are good people. I have a slight problem with this. Uh, we say in here the other bidders were, but we don't share what their bids were. And then we say down here, one of the reasons we wanna give it to these people is because they were very courteous and timely.
And they were...
I'm more interested in the low bidder than I am courteous and timely.
They are the low bidder. The other bid was eighty-six, seventeen.
Okay.
And Jern's was over ten thousand.
Okay. I, I just wish we'd have shared those numbers right at front. I, I'm just saying, we need to, at all times, try to take the lowest bidder. Sure. And I wanted to make sure that we...
The FEMA, we have to take the lowest bidder.
All right. Well, getting you to state that helps me just fine, and I'm okay.
Yeah. No, all the bids, they go in the file for FEMA, so if we get audited, they can see all the bids and what everybody bid. The other thing is that we're bidding more heavier, bigger units for the station, because if we add on to the station or remodel the station, we'll have the tonnage already sitting there, ready to go. So we're, we're, we're trying to be more proactive to it than just put another half-ton unit in there and cross our fingers that it cools in eight hours, where we can do everything we wanna do and, and cool it in thirty minutes.
Like I said, I, I don't have any problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that we were following our normal system of typically taking the lower bid, because I didn't have those numbers, and because of the attached letter that talks about taking these people because they were courteous and timely and prompt, and in an opinion have an exceptional warranty package. I, I don't, I can't, I can't always make my decisions on those interpersonal functions that go on. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
The warranty package FEMA can't handle, so we have to take that out.
Yeah, why, why is that?
What's that?
I would think that would be in their best interest.
Well, I would too. I mean, if I want the business, I would, I would...
You're dealing with the government. Are you kidding me?
Sorry. It comes with a one-year, and then is it ten years on top of that, you think?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Much pleasure.
Don't we have a motion and a...
We do.
Yes.
With the warranty?
Yep.
Both? Okay. Oh, uh, roll call.
Raleigh.
Yeah.
Stewart. Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number six is to consider purchase of fire comm system for Tower One, in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
With support. Discussion.
Why didn't we get this? Did we say no to this?
No, I had to cut it to make the seven sixteen.
Okay.
I had to cut it when we were in Florida doing the rebuild. We had to cut that. We cut the rear camera. We cut, I mean, I, I had so many dollars and...
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, these were the things that were getting cut, and, 'cause I figured we could put this on, and it was no major component, structural component, that it would take to put it back on the truck. And, uh, the good thing is that we waited. We're going dig, we're going digital, and we're going wireless. Versus when we did it on the truck at the point, we would have had a cord on it, and you would have been stuck.
So...
The good part about this is with aerial operations or whatever, they can wear their headsets, and they won't miss any radio traffic, and they can keep communications up. And, and it's right, it's under a helmet fit, and they can go eighteen hundred feet away from the truck or up in the tower and, uh, still be able to communicate with either command or the driver of the truck, the operator in the bucket, or, or the pump, or whatever they're doing. So it, it was a plus to wait the two years, believe me.
Screwed up in reverse.
Yeah, kinda. Technology caught it, and it was a benefit to us.
Okay, roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Carry. Item number seven is to consider purchase of laser radar unit for police department.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. It's amount two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Sorry, I didn't mention that. Any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Carry. Item number eight is to consider resolution approving use of preliminary official statement for a public works building project.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
You have to...
Roll call.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowder.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Carry. Any old business? Anybody having old business? Anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Lord, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.